Okay, all right. We'll call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Alderman for Monday, September 21st, 2020. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a silent prayer.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible.
You gotta take yourself off now. You gotta unmute your... There you go.
Okay. Alderman Brunelli.
Present.
Alderwoman Cavallo.
Present.
Alderwoman Cato.
Present.
Aldermedigio Vincarlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Hunter.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Nujem.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Here.
Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman Perneruski.
Here.
Fifteen present.
Thank you. We have a quorum, and the first item on the agenda this evening is a presentation from the mayor's office, the City of Waterbury Investing in Equity and Opportunity. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mayor O'Leary.
Okay, great. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to share with you a summary presentation on tangible investments that my administration has made to promote equity and opportunity for all of our residents. I believe in Waterbury and our residents, and I believe in the forward-moving momentum that we have built together over the past nine years. However, I can say with confidence that every action taken by my administration has been taken for the sole purpose of creating more equitable Waterbury for all. In keeping with the City of Waterbury's commitment to having a workforce that reflects the community we serve, we have and will continue to put forward a concerted effort to recruit and hire more minority applicants and employees. The City of Waterbury recognizes the importance of having a diverse education workforce and took proactive steps to improving hiring performance. During my first year as mayor of the city, Dr. Shawana Tucker was hired as the city's first supervisor of talent and professional development by the Board of Education. Dr. Tucker went on to serve as chief talent officer for the New Britain Public Schools before being named to the Connecticut State Department of Education's chief talent officer position. In the spring of 2016, the hiring practices of Waterbury's Board of Education were questioned by members of our local NAACP who believed that there was a pattern and practice of discrimination against minority teachers. In April of 2016, the Connecticut Commission on Human Rights, otherwise known as CHRO, voted to investigate the hiring practices of the Waterbury Board of Education. Two fact-finding hearings were held in the preceding months, and the City of Waterbury worked with the commission to produce thousands of documents pertaining to our Board of Education's hiring practices. In the findings shared by CHRO, it was written in a quote, "that there was no finding of a discriminatory policy or systemic discrimination," end quote. As part of their investigation, CHRO reviewed teacher composition data and retention data. They reported that the racial composition of teachers was, quote, "in line with the rest of the state average with respect to African-American teachers," while Hispanic teachers were employed at twice the rate of Hispanic teachers statewide. On that front, CHRO stated that Waterbury has the highest rate of teacher retention in general when compared to contemporary cities such as Bridgeport, Hartford, New Britain, New Haven, Norwich, West Haven, and Wyndham. Although the CHRO's data-driven investigation found no evidence of a discriminatory policy or systemic discrimination in our Board of Education hiring practices, I, along with the Board of Education, recognized the difficulty that our city and others across the state and country have had in hiring minority teachers. With that in mind, I worked in conjunction with CHRO city officials, Waterbury Board of Education, and members of the Waterbury chapter of the NAACP to draft best-practice recommendations, which I voluntarily signed on May 10th, 2017. In January of 2017, Johanna Hayes was hired as the city's second supervisor of talent and professional development. The talent that we saw in Johanna was also recognized by the voters in the 5th district, and they gave her a promotion when they elected her to serve as our first district congresswoman in November of 2018. Currently, we are excited to have former Reed School principal and Waterbury native Juan Mendoza serving as interim human capital director. Under the leadership of Dr. Verna Ruffin, the Education Human Resource Office and the Talent Management Office were combined to become the Human Capital Talent Office. In the human capital framework that Dr. Ruffin has developed, teaching and learning is at the center of everything they do. Their scope of work encompasses recruitment, retaining, and growing talent to meet the ever-changing needs of our children. Waterbury Public Schools' Human Capital Talent Office has continued to work incredibly hard to enhance and expand recruitment of high-quality employees by placing emphasis on diversity. These efforts include collaborating with local organizations and churches to ensure recruitment information is distributed and posted in a way that is easily accessible to our residents, and building upon resources such as the Connecticut State Department of Education's Minority Recruitment Recommendations. After these best-practice recommendations were signed, a district equity leadership team of administrators, teachers, and community partners was formed in September of 2017 to identify areas of potential racial disparities that exist in the Waterbury Public School system. Our district equity leadership team participated with three other Connecticut school districts in the State Education Resource Centers, otherwise known as CIRC. In subsequent years, our team has investigated potential areas of racial disparity within the Waterbury Public Schools. During the 2018-19 school year, Dr. Ruffin and her team took their findings and worked with the Connecticut Education Resource Center in creating a district equity action plan that focused on culturally responsive teaching and learning, workforce development, as well as family and community engagement. This past year, Dr. Ruffin reformed the membership of the district equity leadership team to reflect Waterbury Public Schools' new leadership framework. The new membership designed a three-year professional learning plan that focuses on different school levels at each stage. The rollout of this plan is well underway. In addition to the community-centric distribution of recruitment materials, recruitment efforts also include utilization of a broad spectrum of advertising and job-posting platforms to strategically attract and recruit talented and diverse candidates from a variety of sources. In-person recruitment opportunities, such as career fairs, take place on a frequent basis, and we directly email contacts from a diverse cross-section of our community in an effort to enhance the number of applicants we receive. In addition, we use an application called Handshake, which allows us to connect with historically black colleges and universities. This service allows us to send job posting, outreach events, and career fair information to historically black colleges and universities we have existing relationships with. Staff also visited and recruited last year Bethune-Cookman University in Daytona Beach, Florida. We will work to broaden the number of historically black colleges and universities that we conduct in-person outreach to. Waterbury Public Schools not only seeks innovative ways to actively recruit new diverse hires, we seek to implement programs and incentives to retain those new hires. Some of the programs and initiatives the city currently offers include a team mentor and support program, professional development days, the relay graduate program, utilization of the state of Connecticut's tuition loan forgiveness, voluntarily internal transfers to expand career opportunities within the district, and the provision of curriculum supervisors for teachers to work. We decided to take a closer look at teacher hiring process because the reality is it used to take place in a silo, and previously instituted minority hiring efforts were not yielding the intended results that we had hoped for. Prior to revamping the hiring process, candidates were being interviewed and selected without a codified input from the Human Capital Talent Office. Now, when a principal is seeking to interview and hire teaching candidates, the principal must email the Human Capital Talent Office to request a list of qualified candidates. The talent department forwards the qualified candidates to the principal and ensures that the candidate pool is diverse. Principals have been instructed to diversify interview panels pursuant to the teacher hiring process. Principals must also complete an equal employment opportunity checklist sheet for every interview. The Human Capital Talent Office will ensure that the interview checklist is complete, all documents have been submitted, and that the interview process has complied with the CHRO recommendations. The Human Capital Talent Office will forward the completed packet to a senior HR generalist. That generalist will make a verbal offer and negotiate a salary within 72 hours of receiving the recommendation per the CHRO agreement. In the preceding slides, I have described the concerted effort made by the City of Waterbury to recruit and hire a diverse and capable education staff. Prior to the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities investigation of Waterbury's hiring practices, we, as an administration, recognized and acknowledged a shortage of minority teachers and administrators. With this shortcoming in mind, the city has demonstrated a commitment to actively recruit and hire a diverse pool of paraprofessionals, teacher aides, and English-as-a-second-language assistants. In the years 2013 to 2016, the percentage of minority hires made by Waterbury Board of Education on an annual basis averaged out to 32.85%. In the years preceding the signing of CHRO's best-practice recommendations, which would be 2017 to 2020, the percentage of minority hires made by Waterbury's Board of Education on an annual basis jumped almost 10 percentage points to an average of 41.40%. I believe that these numbers are proof that our new approach toward recruiting and retaining and hiring minorities is working. The data is right there. When we take a closer look at the hiring of teachers in Waterbury, the numbers speak to a trend similar to that seen in the numbers that reflect the Board of Education's total annual hires. In the years 2013 to 2016, the percentage of minority teacher hires made by Waterbury's Board of Education on an annual basis averaged out to just under 17%. In the years preceding, in the years proceeding, the signing of CHRO's best-practice recommendations, which were 2017 through 2020, the percentage of minority teacher hires made by Waterbury's Board of Education jumped over 10% to an average of just under 27%. I think it is important to recognize that this increase is no small part attributed to the dynamic leadership and direction that Dr. Ruffin has brought to Waterbury Public Schools since she's arrived here. When we take a closer look at the hiring of school administrators, I believe that the data speaks to a prolonged commitment and recognized need for minority leadership. From 2013 through September 10th of this year, the percentage of minority administrative hires made by the Waterbury Board of Education on an annual basis averages out to approximately 60%, actually 60.95%. This slide before you shows Waterbury Teacher Association promotion data. These promotions represent individuals who were not originally hired as teachers but were then promoted. This happens often with individuals who are hired as substitute teachers or paraprofessionals while working toward their teaching degrees. In the years 2013 to 2016, the percentage of minority teacher promotions made on an annual basis averaged out to about 15%. But from 2017 to 2020, the years that followed the signing of CHRO's best-practice recommendations, the percentage of minority teacher promotions more than doubled to an average of 36.4% per year. I think that Dr. Ruffin's presence has made a tangible difference as it relates to the increase in minority promotions illustrated here in this chart. The slide before you next shows SAW, which is the Administrators' Union, promotion data, School Administrators' Union. These promotions represent Waterbury Teacher Association employees who were promoted into an administrative position within the School Administrators' Union. From 2013 to 2016, the percentage of minority administrative promotions made on an annual basis averaged out to about 27%. But from 2017, the years that followed the signing of CHRO's best-practice recommendations, the percentage of minority administrative promotions increased to an average of 46.24% per year. Again, the presence of Dr. Ruffin's leadership has made substantive differences here as well. We will continue to work proactively to enhance diversity and opportunity within our school system, but I believe it's worth noting that diversity among teachers is a challenge that is not unique just to the City of Waterbury. Now, we'll move on to City of Waterbury General Government Minority Recruitment Efforts. When it comes to general government, the city's Human Resources Department makes every effort to recruit qualified, diverse candidates for all positions. Achieving greater diversity in our city is one of our key objectives. As you can see here, the city's Human Resource Department attends career recruitment fairs across the state of Connecticut, seeking talented and diverse applicants. In an effort to increase recruitment of diverse candidates, the city's Human Resource Department has teamed up with both police and fire departments on targeted minority recruitment efforts. These efforts include scheduling of outreach events within the City of Waterbury, engaging our faith leaders, attending community events that garner large crowds of people from the greater Waterbury region. In 2017, in an effort to remove barriers that may have adverse impacts on minority applicants, the Human Resource Department instituted a change providing Waterbury residents with 10 residency points on their passing score for both the entry-level firefighter and maintainer-one positions. In 2019, the city continued to focus on breaking down barriers standing in the way of minority recruitment and hiring. A residency point subcommittee was formed that recommended additional changes to the City of Waterbury's existing residency points ordinance. The Civil Service Commission approved this recommendation and asked the city's Human Resource Department to develop a listing of positions that could be characterized as entry level. The commission will further review the additional positions listed before you on this slide tonight. Going back to 2013, you can see that there has been a sustained commitment to hiring a diverse general government workforce. You can see in 2013, it was just under 40% moving along each year, and as of present, and we're a little bit, you know, COVID got in the way of this a little bit, and, you know, we're steadily but moving in the right direction at 41, almost 42%. In the Department of Public Works, over the last eight years, the percentage of minority hires averages out to 44%. Under the leadership of Chief of Police Fred Spagnolo, the Waterbury Police Department has shown a commitment to rethinking recruitment opportunities to diversify the pool of candidates seeking to become Waterbury police officers. They have set up a recruitment table at the CHIP, C-H-I-P, Physical Ability Test in multiple cities, including Danbury, Middletown, and of course, Waterbury. A computer was installed at the front desk of Waterbury City Hall so that residents without access to computers or Wi-Fi could still apply right here in City Hall at the front desk as you walk in the door. And electronic billboards on Interstate 84 and Interstate 91 have been used prior to and immediately after police exam is announced to promote awareness. In 2019, the Waterbury Police Department fielded a historically diverse class of academy recruits with just under half of the candidates identifying as minorities. We are currently in the process of identifying our next police academy class, and one-third of those candidates who are moving forward with their oral interview and medical examination have self-identified as being minorities. On an annual basis, over the last eight years, an average of almost 40% of the Waterbury Police Department's promotions have been minority officers. Over the course of my career in public service, I pride myself on being able to recognize talent and leadership. As chief of police, I was fortunate to be surrounded by talented leaders. In 2007, I appointed Patrick Ridenhour to serve as Waterbury's first African-American Assistant Deputy Chief, and in 2009, I appointed Vernon Riddick to serve as the department's deputy chief. A few years later, while serving my first term as mayor, I made the historic decision to appoint Vernon Riddick to serve as the Waterbury Police Department's first African-American police chief. I'm appreciative of both these men and the service they have provided to our city and its residents. Both Patrick and Vernon have gone on to serve as chiefs in other large city departments. In the past, it was not a secret that Waterbury has struggled to hire diverse classes in the Waterbury Fire Department. A few slides ago, I shared with you the steps that the city took in 2017 to provide an additional 10 residency points for residents applying to be firefighters. The first class of firefighters hired after this change was instituted was the most diverse class in the department's history. Currently, the City of Waterbury is preparing to hire a new class of firefighters. Conditional offer letters were recently sent to 30 applicants, and more than a third of those individuals receiving the letters are identified as being minority. As we continue to take tangible steps to diversify our fire department, I am confident that we will see the number of minority promotions within the department increase as well. I next want to talk about investing in our neighborhoods and the quality of life in those neighborhoods. The Waterbury Police Activity League has been the recipient of five national awards. The Waterbury Police Activity League was recreated, if you will, back in 2005. Back in 2005, when I was chief of police, there were about 80 individuals, 80 students who were participants of the Waterbury Police Activity League. Under our leadership and the support of this vast community that we serve, we immediately partnered up with our Board of Education and our teachers in the City of Waterbury to identify the students in our city who needed the most support. Within one year, we went from 80 individuals to 1,300 individuals, and currently, since 2009, we've been serving about 3,000 members annually in our PAL program. The important part of the PAL program to note is that over 80% of the individuals who are part of the PAL program, and when I say individuals, I mean 80, over 80% of the students who participate in PAL, which goes from age four to age 18, and we actually push it to 21 in many cases, are minority children. And this is, I think, what the goal of all of us had in mind when we recreated the PAL program. Part of the PAL revitalization that we undertook was the creation of the PAL Park Campus. The PAL Park is located on a two-and-a-half-acre parcel located directly across from the PAL Recreation Center and headquarters. In its original state, the parcel of land was significantly blighted by several decaying buildings that once housed a lumber company and a manufacturer. These structures required demolition. Soil contaminants were identified that required remediation in several locations throughout the property, and this project was recognized by the Federal Environmental Protection Agency as a top brownfield project. At a national brownfield conference, I was invited to attend in Chicago in the year 2015. In addition to providing support in areas of educational opportunities, athletics, behavioral health, and related issues, the PAL program has also created enormous opportunities for our students to participate in high school and college searches. Taft School in Watertown was approached by myself back in 2007, and I had asked Taft if they would be willing to come into the City of Waterbury and try to support our underserved population in our PAL program. Since that time, a number of students have received full scholarships to attend Taft School, graduated successfully, and went to some amazing colleges. Also, in addition to Taft's participation in those programs, we have run the summer programs at Taft School, which not only tutors and mentors our students in all the basic languages, including Spanish bilingual courses, but also tutors our students in math, reading, and English. In addition to that, our students are given opportunities to study for the SAT exams, of which we all know is such a challenge for all of our children. And, you know, the outcomes from the Taft Summer School Program and our SAT scores has been remarkable, and has enabled our students from all demographics to be qualified and to get into colleges all over this country. The Waterbury Police Department and Police Activity League continue to play a key role in the city's efforts to prepare, prevent, and respond to COVID-19. On a daily basis, officers and students in PAL have secured basic needs supplies and hand-delivered basic need packages to families and individuals who are required to stay home due to COVID-related quarantines. The City of Waterbury and PAL have partnered with the United States Department of Agriculture's Farmers to Families Program to distribute over 20,000 pounds of fresh produce to Waterbury families. In addition, working with St. Mary's Hospital, secure mobile testing at the PAL parking lot every Thursday so the North End residents who face barriers to testing have free testing option right in the middle of their neighborhood. Under the direction of Police Chief Fred Spagnolo, the Waterbury Police Department frequently engages in community-based events. These efforts include outreach events, pop-up events, and community roundtables. All of these efforts are aimed at strengthening the relationships between residents and police officers in our city's neighborhoods. and police officers in our city's neighborhoods. When I watched the killing of George Floyd in Minneapolis, I was pained and disturbed by the officer kneeling on Mr. Floyd's neck as well as the complicit role played by officers on that scene. While thinking about what needed to be done to ensure that a similar offense does not occur here in Waterbury, I reflected on the role of training and whether the officers involved in that incident had received the adequate amount of training and understanding. In the days that followed, I met many times with Chief Spagnolo to review the training that our officers receive here in Waterbury. At the time of our discussion, we recognized that officers through the State of Connecticut policy receive three days of review training every three years. So the State of Connecticut's policy at that particular time is, is being changed now as we speak. But just months ago, the State of Connecticut's policy about training for post-certification, police officer certification, was three days of training every three years. Neither Fred nor I thought this was adequate, and we quickly moved to strengthen our review training programs. Review training has now been changed so that officers receive five days of training every year. So every year, they will receive officers, it's mandated through department policy, officers must attend training for five days each year instead of three days every three years. The next series of trainings for Waterbury Police Officers actually began today and will run every day through Friday. Examples of the seminars that our officers are mandated to attend include Training on Use of Force, Crimes Motivated by Bigotry and Bias, Cultural Awareness and Diversity, and De-escalation Techniques. I want to talk a little bit about the proactive role in the passage of Connecticut's Police Accountability Bill, which was the historic bill that was just passed a month ago in the area of police accountability in Connecticut. When the Connecticut General Assembly went into special session on this bill earlier this summer to debate police accountability legislation, the leaders of the Judiciary Committee, as well as both the House Majority and Minority Leaders, reached out to me and asked if I would provide input and perspective. I was proud to work across partisan lines to negotiate the final version of the bill, which included mandate use of body-worn cameras and dashboard cameras, require officers to intervene if they see a fellow officer using excessive force, provide new mechanisms to investigate police killings, and to make it easier for the decertification of police officers who have exhibited discriminatory conduct, excessive use of force, or racial profiling. You know, this was a very, very difficult bill to work on as it had created so much dissension between police officers and the State of Connecticut and non-police officers, particularly members of the legislature. But I, I want you to know that I really, after thirty-two years in the police department, I don't agree with the bill in its entirety, but what I do agree with in response to what's happening across this country, I do agree with a higher level of police accountability. I do agree with most of the language contained within the bill. There is some of the language that has to be revisited in the bill, does parts of the bill that I'm most concerned with doesn't go into effect until January first of 2021. So we have plenty of opportunity to go ahead and work together around the table to fix what I think could be unintended consequences in the bill. However, having said that, there isn't a police officer in America who doesn't recognize and understand things need to change. The George Floyd killing, the Breonna Taylor killing, the Richard killing in Atlanta, it's just unacceptable. It's just unacceptable. And we need to work together because the vast majority of police officers here in the State of Connecticut, and I mean the vast majority of police officers, go to work each and every day to protect and serve and put their lives on the line and leave their families to go out and do what they believe in doing, and that is protecting and serving each and every one of us. Yes, like every profession, there are some bad apples. And yes, it is our obligation as elected officials and police managers to identify those individuals who should never wear the badge and to separate them as soon as possible. And this reform legislation makes it easier to identify those officers, and it also makes it easier for us to take the action necessary to separate them from police service. So as controversial as this bill is, having seen what's happened around the country, it is imperative that we work together to make sure that these individuals who have painted a broad brush of distrust for police officers who do their job every day across this country, we may need to make sure that these officers are taken out of police service permanently. They have already smeared the reputation of police officers around the country, and it's unacceptable. And that's why I support the police accountability and reform bill. Earlier this month, the Waterbury Police Department began the first in a series of body-worn camera trials. Axon was selected as the first body-worn for this trial. Axon is a company that provides body-worn cameras, both, as I mentioned, body-worn and dashboard cameras. They have provided the Waterbury Police Department seventeen body cameras with accompanying sensors on gun holsters and tasers. The first trial began on September eleventh. Today's technology has built-in safeguards that will trigger the activation of a body-worn camera in any number of situations, including when a firearm or a taser is drawn. Waterbury Police Department has developed a body-worn and dashboard camera policy that leaves zero discretion to officers. If officers fail to turn on their body cameras, they will be held accountable. I can honestly say that I believe body-worn cameras and dashboard cameras will make for safer interactions between the public and the police officers, as well as strengthen the accountability of our officers in the department. The use of body-worn cameras and dashboard cameras will be fully implemented prior to the state-mandated deadline of June first, two thousand and twenty-two. On June first, we were the first city to hold a community forum in the wake of George Floyd's killing. Unfortunately, COVID-19 limited the in-person attendance, but we were grateful that Governor Lamont, Lieutenant Governor Susan Bysowicz, Senator Murphy, Congresswoman Hayes, and State Senator Joan Hartley, Representatives Butler and Napoli, Pastor Reese, Dr. Gatling, Ginny Ray Clay, Reggie Beeman, and Pastor Hobson took time out of their day to join us, along with Warren Leach. In an effort to ensure strong two-way communication between residents and city government, I then planned and scheduled a four-part series of radio town halls on WATR here in Waterbury. Each one of the four town halls were four hours long and provided us an opportunity to hear the honest and candid feedback from our residents. I'd like to thank State's Attorney Maureen Platt, Pastor Reese, Dr. Bernard Ruffin, Pastor Hobson, and Chief Spagnolo for participating in these important conversations. I want to talk now about affordable housing development, which is very, very important, of course, in a city like Waterbury and the size of Waterbury, and of course, with our population that continues to struggle in poverty. Since coming into office, I've worked with our legislative delegation to secure funding to aid in the construction and rehabilitation of affordable housing stock. The completion of these projects, Liberty Hall Apartments, Liberty Commons, the conversion of the former St. Francis School, Frost and Homestead Avenue's and Davis Gardens, of course, up on Warner Circle, have all taken place in the last five years. For those that do not know, one of my responsibilities as mayor is to appoint the commissioners of the Waterbury Housing Authority Board and Commissioners. When I came into office, the Waterbury Housing Authority was in distress receiving a troubled agency, quote, troubled agency designation from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. After traveling several times to Washington, D.C. to meet with Department of Housing and Urban Development officials and developing a recovery plan, we identified three hundred unused vouchers, which were then immediately issued to our local families. Three hundred unused vouchers, three hundred families that could have been in public housing that, for whatever reason, the prior administration decided not to take advantage of. This experience was eye-opening, and I quickly moved to hire a new executive director and reconstitute the Board of Commissioners. Since the implementation of these changes, the Waterbury Housing Authority has continually improved services to our residents. In fact, each of the last three fiscal years, the Waterbury Housing Authority has been designated as, quote, "a high performer" by the Department of HUD. I am proud to work, I'm proud of the work undertaken by our Housing Authority to improve the lives of our residents. They have partnered with local community organizations to provide programming for tenants and continue to invest in capital improvement projects to upgrade our residents' units. I now want to talk a little bit about quality of life issues and neighborhood issues, and that segues perfectly into active brownfield remediation sites this administration has undertaken. Since coming into office, I have worked tirelessly with state and federal partners to secure millions of dollars for the assessment, remediation, and redevelopment of Waterbury's contaminated brownfield sites. Aside from the fact that brownfields remain the city's biggest obstacle to the provision of pad-ready properties for redevelopment and job creation, I firmly believe that these efforts have had a tremendously positive impact on the quality of life and overall psyche of Waterbury residents. Nowhere has this contemporary investment in our city's environment been more evident than in the South End of Waterbury. Two examples of brownfields we are actively working on to remediate and redevelop are 698 South Main Street, which is the Animate Site. The city of Waterbury purchased this seventeen-acre parcel in 2017. It took us five years to negotiate and to purchase this property for nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars reclaiming land that had been left unattended since the plant closed in the year 2000. It was blighted, it was horrible, it was contaminated. We were able to work with our state partners to secure two-point-one million dollars from the Department of Economic Development, which was cleared, which was used to clear overgrown brush from the site, blight, garbage, pollution, and now demolition. We are currently investing two-point-three million dollars to replace a roof on the two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-square-foot industrial building on the site. 2100 South Main Street, the resident site. My administration secured a million-dollar grant from DECD to demolish the former resident manufacturing building that was destroyed by fire. Last summer, I invited DECD Commissioner David Lehman to visit this site in an effort to secure the remaining million dollars required to remediate. Two projects that I'm excited to see break ground are 909 Bank Street and 313 Mill Street. Both of these sites are brownfields, and both sites will be transformed into parks for our city residents. After public meetings with South End residents, it was decided that a Little League baseball field would be constructed at 313 Mill Street, and we are now preparing to begin the process of soliciting public input from residents and the Brooklyn Neighborhood Association for the design of the future park at 909 Bank Street. One of our recent successful brownfield remediation projects in the South End is the Brass City Regional Food Hub, located on a former brownfield and in the United States Department of Agriculture food desert. The city of Waterbury and Brass City Harvest partnered to create the first regional food hub in the state of Connecticut. This trailblazing facility has enhanced the River Baldwin neighborhood and has provided our local residents with access to quality and fresh produce. I want to talk a little bit about investigating, investing in our Waterbury workforce. At the time that Waterbury's Good Job Ordinance was enacted, the Waterbury Development Corporation served as the ordinance administrator. Admittedly, the success of the Waterbury Development Oversight was limited. After coming into office, I transitioned the role of Good Jobs Administrator to the Northwest Regional Workforce Investment Board. Under the leadership of Kathy Awad, we have seen far greater success. The city of Waterbury is fortunate to have a strong collaborative relationship with the Northwest Regional Workforce Investment Board and their executive director, as I mentioned, Kathy Awad. I have served as a member of their Board of Directors since 2011, and I firmly believe in the city's collaborative partnership with them. Waterbury Construction Careers Initiative reaches out to Waterbury residents in the interest of recruiting them for career opportunities in the construction and building trades. This program provides opportunity for individuals with barriers to employment, such as having a criminal record or being a high school dropout. This initiative brings together community-based organizations, direct service providers, such as the American Job Center, our local school system, and other community groups to achieve training and employment goals. For a number of years, the home of the Construction Career Initiative was on Bishop Street at Waterbury Opportunities Industrialization Center. This was a very successful partnership that connected the North End residents with employment opportunities. The Connecticut Youth Employment Program works for youth ages fourteen to twenty-one, which is a six-week program throughout the summer. This program serves both youth who are currently in school as well as those who are out of school. Program participants receive career experience as well as career exploration, learning and training on skills employers look for within their prospective employees. Jobs First Employment Services is a program for adults and single mothers who are recipients of temporary assistance to needy family support. This program is designed to help these individuals gain and maintain independence from federal and state financial assistance. This is achieved by providing education, training services, and case management needed to secure employment. All participants receive assistance in preparing and looking for a job, transportation assistance, and help with payment for childcare. Youth Build Waterbury services seventeen-to-twenty-four-year-olds who are in need of their high school diploma and are interested in receiving post-secondary credentials and construction sector. Program participants receive monthly statement payments and additional incentives for participation within the program. Youth participants receive assistance in being placed in an internship or permanent employment at the end of the program. The Manufacturers Alliance Service Center, also known as MASC, is a critically important partnership between the city of Waterbury and the greater Waterbury manufacturing community. After years of troubled leadership and dwindling program participation, the MASC Center closed. In July of 2016, I led the city's purchase of the MASC building located at 173 Interstate Lane and reconstituted the Board of Directors. I believe that the importance of MASC program is truly twofold. One, the training provides participants with an in-demand skill set that has led to gainful employment and living wages for many. And two, manufacturing remains the backbone of our economy, and it is vitally important to have a skilled manufacturing workforce. Development program to support local employer hiring needs. MASC offers a variety MASC offers a variety of manufacturing skills, training programs designed by and for manufacturers. These programs are flexible and created for people of all education levels. Participants who attend daytime entry-level CNC operating training earn two NIMS industry-level credentials upon completion. NIMS, N-I-M-S, stands for National Institute of Metalworking Skills. In addition to daytime training on an annual basis, 40 registered apprentices from local manufacturer, manufacturing employers attend evening classes to further develop their manufacturing skillset. I work directly with the former acting chairman of the University of Connecticut Board of Trustees, Mr. Thomas Ritter, to have the UConn Waterbury Branch designated as a Center for Excellence for Allied Health Science. That's right, the University of Connecticut Downtown Waterbury only provided two years of credentials for our students, meaning that if they wanted a four-year degree, they had to go up to UConn in Storrs. Now, under the collaboration with Dr. William Bezuto, the director of the Waterbury UConn Branch, and Mr. Thomas Ritter, we are now designated as a Center for Excellence for Allied Health, right here at the University of Connecticut, right here in downtown Waterbury. This designation means that beginning this fall, students from Waterbury have the opportunity to complete all Allied Health Sciences Bachelor Degree requirements at UConn Waterbury. I recognize the importance of establishing this designation because most Waterbury students don't have the financial means to attend UConn's main campus in Storrs. Financially distressed Waterbury students, who in the past may have dropped out after completing two years of courses at UConn's Waterbury Branch, can now complete their four-year bachelor's degree and attain high-paying jobs in one of the nation's fastest-growing career fields. So we're really proud of that because we have so many students now who can actually go right to Waterbury UConn Downtown and get their four-year degree in Allied Health, which, you know, includes, of course, registered nursing, APRNs, and it enables them to be able to stay home and work and live at home and not have to commute and/or live in the expensive dormitories up in Storrs, Connecticut. We're really excited about this. This, this is our brand-new initiative that's going on right now. I also want to point out, of course, that there are great Allied Health programs at Post University and also Nagatuck Valley Community College. Waterbury Career Academy, opened in the fall of 2013, has been a tremendously successful high school. What makes the Career Academy unique in comparison to our public high schools is that enrolled students are offered four industry-sector career pathways in the fields of manufacturing, healthcare, information technology, and human services. In the manufacturing pathway, students are connected directly with local companies, such as Clyde Dell Manufacturing, McDermott, Ilet Design, for site visits, job shadowing, and pre-apprentice placements. These students are also able to earn up to 17 college credits from Nagatuck Valley Community College. Over the last four years, Waterbury Career Academy has placed approximately 30 students in full-time, high-paying employment positions in manufacturing. I want to talk a little bit about off-education now and investing in quality of life in our city parks and active recreation facilities. The city of Waterbury's parks are treasure public assets that are utilized every day by our residents of all ages, from all different backgrounds. I believe that providing residents with access to clean, modern, and safe parks to exercise and recreate is critically important. When I was first elected as mayor, I was dismayed with a park system that had gone without critically needed maintenance and capital investment for decades. After touring every single park and recreation facility during my first year in office, I made a commitment to take decisive action. Over the last eight years, my administration has invested more than $15 million to support the revitalization of our pork, our parks, and active recreation facilities. This included the launch of a splash pad replacement program. When I got into office, we had one, one out of 17 functioning splash pads. One. 16 others have been broken for years. Currently, we now have 16 functioning splash pads that our children and families are able to use to escape the summer heat. We have also installed nine new public restroom facilities in nine different parks. To quickly go over some of these, I'll just quickly skim through this, but I want you to see and listen to every demographic area of the city that we've invested in the park program. Hamilton Park Pool recently ensured resident access to outdoor cooling option by investing in renovations. North End Rec Center, design, we designed and installed central air conditioning. River Baldwin Rec Center, renovation of basketball courts with site amenities and design and installation of central air conditioning. Hopeville Park, installation of basketball courts with site amenities, fencing, replaced bathroom, construction of splash pads, and installed a new playscape. Berkeley Park, construction of splash pad and fence replacement. Lakewood Park, construction of double handball court, abatement and painting of gazebo, installation of new playscape, parking lot improvements, renovation of basketball courts, replacement of roof on the bathhouse. Washington Park, installation of new windows in the rec center. Rivera Hughes Park, construction of double handball court, splash pad, restrooms, resurfaced basketball court, other side amenities. Municipal Stadium, construct a new locker room facility, replace field turf, conductive renovation of baseball fields. Fulton Park, reconstructed the waiting pool, annual pool maintenance, bathroom esterations, rehabilitated pond fountains, install new fencing and sidewalks, repaired fountain and improved landscaping, warming hut renovations and amenities, new playscape, greenhouse, storage shed, and cottage improvements. We've invested over $15 million in our parks, and I believe, and I think you'll agree, that it's an investment well worth making. I was shocked at the condition of our parks back in the spring of 2012. It was, it was devastating to see some of the most beautiful parks in this city had been let go the way that they had been. It was awful. And we've taken all the community development block grant money that's available and invested in those parks to bring them back so that our students, our children, our families will have a quality of life in the city of Waterbury that they deserve. Instead of buying fire trucks, are using the money to put windows in city-owned buildings that the city is obligated to do. We're using the community development block grant money for what it was intended to be used for. And that's for parks and other quality-of-life issues in the cities. And that's what we're doing with the money. City of Waterbury Health and Wellness Initiatives. Even as the pandemic disrupted every facet of our lives, the Waterbury Health Department never faltered in delivering essential public health services to the city of Waterbury residents. Our Health Department is comprised of Environmental Health Division, Community Health Division, and the Preparedness Division. Each of our divisions is dedicated to providing high-quality services to our community. The Lead and Healthy Home Program provides renovations to remediate lead-based paints and other environmental health hazards from income-qualified housing units occupied by our children. This program prevents lead poisoning and the devastating developmental challenges that lead, that lead exposure causes. Less than two months into my first term as mayor, I was notified by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development that our lead paint program was under federal investigation. Subsequently, the program was then given, quote, "high-risk" status by HUD, and I traveled to Washington DC on several occasions to meet with HUD officials to discuss the fulfillment of conditions to restore, put the program back in good standing. Since then, the program, under the leadership of Fran Ford, the program has had an overall performance rating of 100 out of 100 since January 13th, excuse me, since January 2013, and is on track to complete abatement of 165 housing units of lead-based paint hazards by September 2021. The Women, Infants, and Children's Program is a regional program based out of our Health Department office. This nutrition assistance program provides healthcare referrals, nutrition, education, breastfeeding promotion and support, and supplemental foods to pregnant, breastfeeding, and postpartum women, as well as infants and children up to the ages of five. The Infant Immunization Program, the goal of the city's infant immunization plan is to facilitate access to recommended vaccines and improve immunization coverage rates for Waterbury children. From July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 676 Waterbury children under the age of two were identified for immunization outreach. I'm going to repeat that. From July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, 676 Waterbury children under the age of two were identified for immunization outreach. 637 of those 676 children identified were successfully brought back for immunization and updating of their health records. HIV Prevention Program, in 1986, Waterbury Health Department began providing HIV prevention education services throughout the city, though through the use of a mobile health band, anonymous and confidential HIV outreach testing and linkage to services is offered to Waterbury free of charge. Opioid Lawsuit. On August 30th, 2017, the city of Waterbury became the first municipality in the state of Connecticut to file lawsuits against the opioid-producing drug companies. At my direction, the city filed suit against seven pharmaceutical companies seeking damages related to the fraudulent marketing of prescription opioids and the devastating and fiscal cost bared by our city of Waterbury and our residents. We also developed what's called the Warm Handoff Program, which is a program initiated when anyone in the city of Waterbury experiences an opioid-related overdose. Overdose Response Technicians, who have been trained and certified as recovery coaches, are dispatched to the scene of an overdose with support from the Waterbury Police Department. The ultimate goal of the Warm Handoff Program is to connect people to care, primarily substance abuse treatment. One out of three, one out of three households are impacted by opioid use. One out of three. One out of 10, one out of 10 people with opioid problem receive treatment. One out of 10. It's a terrible, terrible, terrible crisis. And it's just amazing to me that these pharmaceutical companies were able to get away with this for all these years. The city of Waterbury opened up our Emergency Operations Center March 11th, 2020. Since opening, of course, you remember, all of you remember, that was right in the very beginning of the pandemic. Waterbury was the first city to open up an emergency operations center. Waterbury is the only city that I'm aware of that still runs the emergency operations center, which has been running 24 hours a day, seven days a week, since March 11th, 2020. Since opening, the EOC has been in operation and staffed by health department staff and police and fire employees seven days a week, 24 hours a day. We have received almost 15,000 calls into the EOC Center since opening. The city's school nursing staff have provided contact tracing for 2,500 COVID-positive persons since the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. The city of Waterbury has distributed over 550,000 student meals, delivered 45,000 meals to our homebound seniors. All our senior centers are closed, so we're bringing the food right to their doorsteps. Fulfilled 481 basic need service requests. These 481 basic service requests represent 1,530 individuals served. You know, this has been an amazing effort on so many, on behalf of so many people in the city of Waterbury in need. And the amazing effort has been launched by many, many volunteers since the beginning of COVID, who still show up each day to our senior centers and our schools, pick up food for their, for the seniors, and go out and deliver the food each and every day since the pandemic started. Now, we go out on Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays, and we have enough food for each of our seniors to get them through. So on Monday, there's enough food to get them to Wednesday, there's enough food to get them through Friday, there's enough food in Friday's package to get them through to Monday. And I have to tell you, I'm so proud of the people of Waterbury who stepped up and continue to step up to use their personal vehicles and their personal time to deliver this, these meals to our senior citizens. It's something that we should all be very proud of. Another health and wellness initiative that we've undertaken is the Kids Marathon. It's an annual event that I take a lot of pride in. The goal of the Kids Marathon program is to introduce kids to the sport of running in an effort to promote healthy lifestyles amongst our youth. Under the direction of Olympian Rod Dixon, city clerk Michael Dalton, and YMCA Director Jim O'Rourke, this program continues to gain in popularity. We've seen the participant numbers jump from about 450 students back in 2013 to 2,500 students just last year. Others have recognized the importance of what we're trying to do with our students. And organizations such as Cigna Healthcare, and Poland Springs, and others comprise a list of over 20 sponsors that support the program. Two years ago, the city of Waterbury partnered with Belinda Lopez and the Center for Human Development to establish a city warming center to protect homeless individuals from inclement weather. The Warming Center is housed in the Center for Human Development Hospitality Center over on East Main Street. At the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, Belinda reached out to me with social distancing concerns at the Warming Center. The city rented a commercial tent and heaters so the Warming Center could continue to operate and offer services in a decompressed setting. Last Monday, I had the opportunity to meet with Angie Mathis, the Executive Director of the Greater Waterbury Health Partnership, Joanne Reynolds Belanda, the United Ways Vice President of Community Impact, and Alan Carter, the Connecticut Community Foundation's Vice President of Program and Strategy. Together, we had an open and honest conversation about how we can better use Waterbury's evidence-based health information to improve the overall health of our residents. We also talked about the need for better communication with our nonprofits so that they can share with their clients the great initiatives and services that are already in place. My commitment to working, excuse me, my commitment to everyone watching tonight and every resident of this city is that we will work hard every day to be more successful in affecting positive health outcomes. As I referenced earlier in the presentation, manufacturers in the region have consistently been challenged in their reference to find skilled workers. The Nagatuck Valley Community College Program is geared toward high school juniors and seniors with a focus garnering interest and raising awareness about career opportunities in the state's manufacturing industry. The 172 Waterbury High School students who have participated in this program are able to take advanced manufacturing courses, acquire college credit, and have had the opportunity to earn certification at the National Institute for Metalworking Skills. Thanks to the dynamic leadership and collaboration with Dr. Ruffin and John Hopkins, this past February, Waterbury Public Schools and Post University announced the creation of an Early College High School Program. The Early College Program is a unique partnership designed to eliminate barriers between high school and higher education in order to create more seamless path for students towards college and career. The Early College High School at Crosby High School will offer students the opportunity to earn an associate's degree in accounting, criminal justice, early childhood education, legal studies, management or marketing, while simultaneously earning their high school diploma. Students are able to attend college classes through coursework at the Students are able to attend college classes through coursework at the Post Campus online coursework attending college classes taught by a post-credential Waterbury Public School instructor. After graduating high school, they'll be able to obviously take all those credits up to Post University, where Post University has started a very aggressive financial aid program for all of our Waterbury students. Thank you, Post University. As discussed in previous slides, UConn Waterbury is critically important resource for Waterbury residents who would like to continue their education but not, do not have the financial means to leave home to go to college. I'm grateful Waterbury continues, Waterbury UConn continues to step up and provide student support services for students coming from Waterbury schools who are low-income, first-generation collegegoers. These programs are key because many of our aspiring students will not be able to graduate without the supplemental support. I'm pleased and excited that this fall, 33 students from Crosby Kennedy will be whammed sacred aren't Holy Cross will receive student support services at UConn Waterbury. Improving graduation rates. Waterbury Public Schools' four-year cohort graduation rates have increased nearly 20 percentage points since 2011 and '12 when I took office. The rate has increased every year between 1 and 5 percentage points annually. The four-year cohort graduation rate is calculated by tracking an individual group of students from their initial entrance into ninth grade through graduation in four years or less. Dr. Ruffin has focused on early intervention to improve graduation rates. Instead of waiting until the junior year of a student who is struggling, these students are identified early in a regular schedule of meetings with principals and counselors takes place to identify what the issues are. Also, when a student is identified as being behind their respective cohort, they are provided credit restoration opportunities and summer school in an effort to catch up. Waterbury Public Schools experienced a decrease in exclusionary discipline over the last five years. There's been a 31% decrease in out-of-school suspensions with the 2015-16 school year to the 2018-19 year, and a 25% decrease in in-school suspensions from 2015-16 to 2018 and '19. Dr. Ruffin's administration is working closely with principals and teachers to track frequency of suspension by school, classroom, and student. Finally, the Kids Program. Kids is an acronym for Keeping Individuals Driven for Success. The Kids Program has allowed us to open lines of communication with our students that did not exist before. We have experienced an overwhelming response from families as well as students. The students are now approaching our school resource officers in schools frequently to not only address issues and concerns, but at times just to say good morning. Creating meaningful relationships and preventing future disciplinary incidents are the overall goals of the Kids Program. Working with Dr. Ruffin, Police Chief Fred Spagnolo was a big part of this program. And in the two years that the Kids Program has been in existence, 186 students have been enrolled, and only 16 of those children have had a future negative interaction with the criminal justice system. The program statistics for the first two years point to it being a great success. For those of you that are still with us, and I apologize for going on so long, but I have to tell you, there is so many positive things happening in Waterbury. In conclusion, the city of Waterbury recognizes and embraces the responsibility proactively of investing in our residents' quality of life. Ensuring that all residents have equitable access to gainful employment, safe neighborhoods, modern parks and recreation space, and health and wellness programming has and continues to be a top priority of this administration. The city of Waterbury will continue to engage in conversation and work collaboratively with community organizations and stakeholders to improve the lives of Waterbury residents. As evident in the data shared this evening, over the last nine years, this administration's systems in Waterbury have been changed. I'm going to repeat that. As evident in the data shared this evening, over the last nine years of this administration, systems, systems have been changed here in the city of Waterbury. The hard work and commitment of so many has led to improvements in every facet of life, including employment and promotion opportunities, quality of life, workforce training, healthcare. The COVID-19 pandemic and the disproportionately high impact this virus has had on the black and brown communities we serve has served to sharpen the focus of this administration as we continue to commit to working with the Greater Waterbury Health Partnership and other community partners to substantially reduce the inequities of healthcare received by our residents. I thought it was imperative to do this presentation tonight because of all the rhetoric that has been bandied about since the death of George Floyd. And I want to make sure that the residents of Waterbury understand what a great police department we have, that the men and women of the Waterbury Police Department are committed to providing and protecting and serving our community. I also want to make sure that the 15 members of our Board of Aldermen recognizing some are new and some haven't been involved and probably don't, didn't realize all this information has been going on for the last nine years, recognize and understand that we know, we know that we need to support police reform. We know that we need to continue to support our black and brown community. We know that we must continue to support our education processes and everything that's associated with quality of life, behavioral, behavioral health issues, and, and medical health issues. We know, and that's what we've been doing. This data is actual factual data. So I would ask all the Aldermen, Mr. President Penaruski, I will have this package delivered to each of the Aldermen either via email or hard copy delivered to their homes tomorrow. Any questions, of course, we can bring them up at any different times, but at the end of the day, I thought this presentation was very, very strong and supportive of the fact that the city of Waterbury continues each year to move in a forward direction, recognizing the disparities and inequities, but also recognizing that we are able to understand the challenges that we face, and we are putting in place every single month of every single year, opportunities to advance the city and the people of this city. So I thank you all for your time. I apologize for the length of this presentation, but it's not easy to talk about all the initiatives and all the positive things that are happening in this city in, in less than an hour. So I thank you. I'm sorry that your meeting is starting a little bit later than what you expected, but I think that the information contained in this presentation was vitally important for each of our Aldermen and each of our Board of Education Commissioners who are listening in as well, as well as our residents, to recognize and understand that we're not just standing idly by. We've taken a proactive approach to making Waterbury the best city in Connecticut for quite a long time now, and I think the results in many areas speak for themselves, but also recognizing that we have a long way to go, and we're willing to take on that challenge and that fight, and to keep moving Waterbury in a positive direction, especially for our underserved communities. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know we had spoken a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of meetings ago, I wasn't at the last meeting, about doing an ad hoc committee. We've been talking about it in our caucus, and I think we're looking more at this point towards doing something as a committee of the whole so that everyone can participate, and we should be convening that shortly as a way to look for what we as a board can do to try to address these issues or build on these issues that the city has been working on. So I think we all agree that there is a lot that's been done, there's more that needs to be done, and we're going to be taking a look at that, but we'll do it instead of an ad hoc committee, as a committee of the whole in the, shortly, as I said, we've been having our conversations in our caucus about that at this point. So with that, the next item on the agenda would be public speaking. I think we're trying a new system today that's supposed, that should be less clunky, I guess I would say, than what we've been using with, with the call-in. So those who wish to address the board had called in on the number, and we'll begin the process of trying to get them on the line, and hopefully we'll get them on more quickly than we have in the past.
Forward your message. When you have finished recording, you may hang up or press 1 for more options.
Hello?
Hi. This is the Board of Aldermen, so I'm going to ask you to state your name and address for the record.
Yeah.
Remind you, there's a five-minute period. So go ahead if you want to get started.
Sure. My name is Kit, K-I-T, Salasar Smith. My address is 392 Hill Street. Okay?
Yep.
And the reason I'm calling, I'm calling to urge the Aldermen to please vote to repeal that hospital tax break because, first of all, the hospital, my understanding is that that hospital, Waterbury Hospital is the one I'm talking about, gets federal funds. Secondly, it's a for-profit entity, and they're getting federal funds already, but they're also, they've also cut jobs. I happen to know an individual who is among those whose job was cut. So they're getting funds already, they're cutting jobs, they're a for-profit hospital, and yet, they get a tax break. And the rest of us, the people who are residents here, you know, some of them like myself, I'm a retiree on a fixed income, and I happen to know other residents here who are either retired and some who are unemployed or certainly underemployed right now, and we're not getting a tax break, you know what I mean? So I, I don't understand how it can be justified to give that hospital a tax break when clearly they're not providing any jobs, they're cutting jobs, and the rest of us need a tax break. So if anybody gets a tax break, it should be the residents, the, the, the rest of the people here first, not a for-profit entity who's cutting jobs. So I'm, I'm just calling, that was my only reason for calling. I'm just calling to urge the Board of Aldermen to please vote to consider repealing that tax break, okay? And, and as I said, that's my only, that's my only issue tonight because I'm, I'm suffering with my limited income and trying to pay the taxes here in this city and to find out that that hospital's getting a tax break while they're making money and getting federal funds. I'm not getting federal funds, you know what I mean? And I'm sure most of us that live here are not, so please consider that. And thank you very much for listening to me, I appreciate it. Okay? And I hope all of you have a good evening.
Thank you.
My name is Ed Gadamzki, and I've been employed at Waterbury Hospital for the past 32 years as a PC tech in the IT department.
Would you just, do also just state your address for the record?
Sure. 34 Gale Drive, Waterbury 06704.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, thank you.
You're welcome. On August 3rd of this year, just two weeks after Waterbury Hospital received a large property tax break, 10 of the employees in the IT department were called into the hospital conference room and were blindsided and told, told that September 1st, we would be terminated. Our positions were being outsourced to India. Three of the 10 employees were analysts, and the other seven employees were PC tech and help desk staff. Seven of the 10 terminated employees are either Waterbury residents or graduated from a Waterbury school. We were told that we could reapply for our positions and would be offered comparable wages and benefits to what we currently have. As of September 1st, anyone calling the help desk is now speaking to a person physically located in India. Of the seven PC techs terminated, three accepted offers from the company R4 because they had no choice to do so. Two of the techs have underlying medical conditions, and the third tech just bought a house, has a wife and three little girls at home. All three techs apparently fit the R4 budget as they accepted pay cuts to make a low-to-mid $20 per hour range. The remaining four PC techs were all offered the exact same pay of $13.46 per hour with no counter offer. In my case, that is about one-third of my salary after 32 years at the hospital. The four of us are now on unemployment during a national pandemic while the hospital is helping India's economy. In addition to the low pay rate offer, we were told we must find our own insurance. R4 is, R4 is offering to pay 80% up to $800 per family. A family insurance plan in Connecticut is about $2,000 a month. R4 wanted us to be on call for free, then counter offered a $100 weekly premium, which is still a $650 weekly loss for our IT technician who was on call. We are also losing our pension donation as R4 will not contribute to any retirement plan. In my case, I would be taking a pay cut of $25,000 per year, and that is before factoring in my $13.46 pay rate. The first week of September, the hospital has already hired a new PC tech from the outside instead of recalling one of the four laid-off techs on unemployment. I wonder if the new tech is making $13.46 per hour. The PC techs are in a union contract that does have a successorship clause, which means the hospital cannot legally terminate us as they did, but they simply don't care. Arbitration could take weeks or years to win, but we cannot afford to be on unemployment that long. We are asking for your help to please, please investigate this wrongful termination as our families have been impacted. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Hello?
Hi. Can you just state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Robbie Goodrich, 14 Standrod Avenue, 0674. That's a, that's a hell of a job, Mayor. That's a, a really good job, and for an hour, you, the mayor doesn't mention a definition of what racial equity would mean. For the board, I think that should draw some great concerns for you in terms of this administration's ability to actually define what racial equity is. And for this moment, I just want to do that for you. From the Center of Social Inclusion, an expert on government achieving racial equity states that racial equity is both an outcome and a process. You achieve racial equity when no, when race no longer determines one's socioeconomic outcomes, when everyone has what they need to thrive, no matter where they live. As a process, we apply racial equity when the most impacted by structural inequity are meaningfully involved in the creation and implementation of the institutional policies and practices that impact their lives. I think it's pretty damning that the mayor refuses to acknowledge all the outcomes. And I'm going to go line by line on some of them for you tonight because it's very difficult when someone filibusters and doesn't provide you this presentation beforehand so that you can have an honest and upfront conversation with your elected officials, because we did request it, and they denied access to it. So let's talk about the education-based evidence that the mayor introduced tonight. And there's a whole litany of it. Some of it's good, some of it's more of him just tokenizing. Some of it's good, some of it's more of him just tokenizing black and brown folks that work for the district. So the mayor excludes some very key findings and facts, let me say that again, facts, it's F-A-C-T-S, about the CHRO investigation. Now meanwhile, they didn't find any legal standing for systemic or individual cases. That's because no one came forward with the complaints. Since that investigation was completed, more than 30 individuals have filed complaints with the CHRO about the school district's hiring practices and policies, including promotions. Thirty. Three, zero. That's more than any other school district in the state of Connecticut. So he also applauds the DLP Committee that was built through CIRC and the Pacific Education Group. And to be frank with you, I have the receipts, the actual meeting notes and participation level of the Waterbury Public Schools personnel for that year-long process, and to be frank with you, the attendance was horrible. Out of 56 total event meetings for eight individuals, only 33 of those spots were actually filled. And that equity plan that was voted in by the Board of Education a year and a half ago sat stagnant for a complete year before anybody looked at it again in the district. So, and even still, he talks about the Relay Graduate School of Education program, which was a great success, but he doesn't acknowledge two things. One, it was shelved in year one of Dr. Ruffin's tenure, where it wasn't even operating in the school district, and now that it's operating again, it's operating at a level which is less than the people that were initially enrolled in it in the first year. So meanwhile, that is a successful plan. If we lived in a world in which we're trying to achieve racial equity, Relay Graduate School of Education would be supplied many more opportunities to recruit staff into their educator preparation program, but the mayor ignores those facts. So, and there are many other things that folks should focus on in terms of the education outcomes, like for instance, the graduation rates. There is a larger gap between Hispanic students and white students now in the graduation rate. Even though both have gone up, whites are graduating at a much greater level than Hispanic students are today. And meanwhile, the difference between black and white students is relatively the same, even though both have increased.
One minute, Mr.-
So there isn't much equity. Yeah, I got it, Paul, thanks. And then, the idea that he talks about brownfields or housing, we have the highest eviction rates, and then goes into the police. Highest disparities in traffic stops, highest rates of arrests in juveniles, and then we forget about the Waterbury 28 in the protest, where we still have a member of our community, Redon Legree, who's still in prison because of the unlawful arrests that were made on that day. So, and get to the idea that he is proud of his remediated brownfield works. To place black and brown children in schools that reside, like at Reed School, where it was a remediated field, or where Pal is now, is shameful. And the idea that a black and brown family has to live in remediated brownfield areas and send their kids to school in those places is just one inequitable outcome that the mayor continues to ignore.
That's time.
So, I encourage you, yep, I had just had, my final question-
Hello?
Hi. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name's Thomas Palletier, I live at 112 Concord Street, Waterbury. I'm calling this evening to congratulate the mayor on his presentation. Clearly, the city has done, under his leadership, everything and anything they can to hire minorities and people that are highly qualified for each job spec in the city of Waterbury. They have done more than any other administration has in previous years. I can attest to what the mayor said about our park system. There is no administration that has done more for our park system that clearly, when he first took office, was lagging in every park in the city's history. There's no other administration that has spent more to upgrade our park system to give each and every citizen and youth in the city an opportunity to have a safe playing experience at our parks. You know, what was just previously said by Mr. Goodrich, you know, I've been through the Waterbury education system, I grew up through the Waterbury education system, I've been amazed, you know, to see what our education system has been able to do over the last eight years of this administration to give our children who wouldn't have opportunities in their life to better educate themselves, to seek opportunities to help them succeed in life. As far as our police and fire, this administration has done everything and anything they can to get more minorities involved in taking the steps to protect our citizens and, you know, giving them opportunities to better themselves. As far as what Mr. Goodrich has said, I am in total disagreement with him. This is an individual who has consistently said that we need to take officers out of our school settings. If you talk to teachers and students, these SROs that are in our school system have been great public figures and done a lot for our students, not only protecting them, but being role models to teach them right from wrong, and just listening to them. This is an individual who somehow is against our SROs, but quite frankly, when he was a substitute teacher years ago, when I was in layman's school, would continuously call for their assistance when the students back then tormented him, and now he is against our SROs and our police. You know, we are very lucky to have lived in a city where our police and first responders do a lot for our citizens, not only protecting them, but for helping the most vulnerable in our city.
One minute, Mr.-
I commend the mayor, I commend the mayor and the city for what they've done for the people that have been affected by COVID, you know, and all the people that have volunteered. We have made very great strides, and we cannot let this go downhill by some few that are trying to bring the city down. So I would ask for the city's continued support and the mayor's initiatives. Thank you very much.
Okay. There's, that's the end of the callers. So with that, the next item of business would be the approval of minutes for the meeting of Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion with respect to the minutes? Alderman Brunelli?
Motion approved the minutes for the regular meeting held on Tuesday, September 8th, 2020, so moved.
Alderman Lopez, is there a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, does anyone have any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the minutes as presented, a no vote to disapprove them. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Just before we go into the committee of the whole, you should have been emailed earlier, probably last week, a memorandum of understanding between the Health Department and the Greater Waterbury Health Partnership, which is a regional health improvement partnership made up of various local health providers, and this is just going to set up an annual written partnership agreement with each of the founding partners as well as some newer elements. So that would include our Health Department, Connecticut Community Foundation, St. Mary's Hospital, Stay Well Health Center, United Way of Greater Waterbury, Waterbury Hospital, and then there can be others that would be added. So I would, at this point, entertain a motion to add that MOU as new business item number 13.
So moved.
Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli, Alderman Lopez?
Second.
And properly seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and that'll be added on as new business item number 13. And with that, Alderman Brunelli, I would entertain a motion that we recess ourselves into a committee of the whole.
So moved.
Alderman Lopez?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and we're sitting as a committee of the whole. So, the following, well, item number one is a notification of exams from the Human Resource Office, it's received and placed on file. Item number two are the annual reports from the Fire Department, Human Resources Department, and Police Department, that's received and placed on file. Item number three is the Connecticut Community College's facility request reservation agreement with Nogadook Valley Community College at no cost for use of space for Waterbury's Transition Learning Center program. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve item number three.
Alderman Lopez?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any questions? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the reservation agreement, a no vote to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Item number four is the submittal of Waterbury's financial status report for the fiscal year ending 2020, it's received and placed on file, as is item number five, which is the submittal of the city's general fund balance for fiscal year 2020. Item number six is requesting a budget transfer within the city's general fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, in the amount of $3,145,000. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve item number six.
Alderman Lopez?
Aye, second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any questions? Any discussion? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be with you in one second here. Pardon me. Under the special revision projects, special revenue projects, economic development efforts under $95,000, that some of that is going towards promoting the city. Haven't we funded that with private businesses?
Mike or Sarah, one of you-
Yes. Good evening, Sarah Gary, Policy and Budget Management Specialist. Yes, we have received donations from private businesses related to our marketing and rebranding efforts. The funding that's going into the Economic Development Efforts project is not solely related to that, it may relate to other ways to promote the city, not only the contract we have with the Works Group for Marketing and Rebranding.
Thank you. Concerning the community improvement activities, $50,000, do we know what community groups, how were they selected, or how will they be selected? And who will oversee this to ensure funds are spent as intended?
The transfer of $50,000 would go into an existing project to fund community groups. We do have some of the funding included in our general fund budget as well. Each year, we fund certain groups, sometimes there are requests that come in from different community groups after the budget has been developed. The mayor does review those requests, they're also reviewed by the Cost Containment and Oversight Committee. This funding has also been used to fund various events that take place in the city, but they are reviewed by the mayor and the CCOC before any contribution is made to an outside community group.
As far as election expenses, it gave an example of the presidential primary not taking place in 2020. I recall voting in the presidential primary in 2020. Is that an incorrect statement?
It did not take place in fiscal year 2020.
Understood.
So it was scheduled to take place during fiscal year 2020, but then had been delayed. So originally, the presidential preference primaries should have taken place in April, so both the registrar's office and the town clerk's office had planned for that to take place in April, since it was delayed. We do expect some expenses to occur in fiscal year 21, actually right now and happening through November, that weren't expected to take place. We had the expenses from the August primary that may not have been budgeted. We have received funding from the state of Connecticut related to the elections, a majority of it is related to the absentee ballots due to the fact that the volume of absentee ballot voting will be much greater than previous elections, so we would be using the state funding first, and if we need to use this additional $50,000, we'd use it after the state funding is exhausted.
And I'm looking at the job recruiting, anticipated expenses that did not occur, saying that there was a significant surplus. How much was that surplus, and do we expect to utilize that entire surplus? And why would we be transferring money into that if there is a significant surplus there?
So in fiscal year 20, you may remember, we did a couple budget transfers, and the board approved, believe, two separate budget transfers to the Human Resources Department related to testing and recruiting, specifically for public safety positions, and a lot of that testing and hiring did not take place in fiscal year 20. The department ended the year with a surplus of close to $100,000 in the two main line items that are used for the testing and recruiting process. So we were concerned that as we get into fiscal year 21, and their testing and hiring may start to pick up again, that the budget in fiscal year 21 won't accommodate all the expenses because many of them were anticipated to take place last year. So we're asking for the board to approve a transfer of $50,000 to a project for recruiting and testing, again, mostly for public safety positions, because that would have taken place last year, and the department did end the year with a significant surplus, so we wanted to move some of that funding into a non-lapsing account.
Okay, under capital improvements, we're moving $825,000 for vehicle replacement. What is the current balance of that fund now, and how much of that is slated to be utilized, and what will this transfer bring that balance to?
The unallocated vehicle account currently has a balance of about $1.2 million. We do have projects in the FY '21 capital plan budgeted in almost that amount. Once we set up the FY '21 vehicle projects that were approved in the capital plan, that account would only be left with a $38,000 balance. So this transfer of $825,000 would result in a balance of about $863,000 as we move forward. That funding will sit in the unallocated account. It would need, in order to set up a project, the board would need to approve a transfer, and we would most likely be using that funding to fund our vehicles as we move forward in future fiscal years. So as we start to develop the fiscal year '22 vehicle plan, we would use that funding to fund the purchase of those vehicles. We do have a contribution to the vehicle fund budgeted in our FY '21 general fund budget of $1 million. We will put that on hold until probably much later in the year to see how the fiscal year unfolds. year unfolds, since there's a lot of uncertainty currently, and if we had to hold back on that contribution, we would.
Next, we have $825 being moved into the unallocated capital account. What is our current balance on that now? And as far as projects that may arise, isn't this generally something that we put in the budget for, under capital improvement?
We do not have a contribution to the capital improvement fund budgeted in our FY '21 general fund budget. Over the last several years, it's been difficult to budget a contribution in the general fund budget during budget development time, as we try to keep the mill rate stable. So we have typically gotten funding into this account through these year-end transfers with surplus funding. So the unallocated capital account currently has a balance of just under $1.5 million. There's still about $500,000 worth of projects that need to be set up that were approved in the FY '21 capital plan, so that would bring the balance to just under $1 million. And the transfer of $800,000 approved would lead us to a balance of about $1.8 million. And again, it would sit in that unallocated account. It would be used to fund the projects in the fiscal year '22 capital plan in future years. If any projects that are currently set up run into any problems or budget shortfalls, we would bring budget transfers before the board for approval.
Can someone speak on why we wouldn't use some of these funds to pay down some of our debt service, or to try and lower the mill rate for the next budget year, considering, you know, we do pay a pretty high mill rate in the city, as everybody's aware?
I would note that the overall surplus, the $3.6 million surplus, is less than 1% of our budget. So in the scheme of things, it is a modest surplus. And we, it's difficult to end the year with a surplus consistently. We have to put in spending controls, and this past year, there was a hiring and spending freeze that was instituted in April due to the uncertainty related to COVID. We do have a very tight budget. A mill is equal to, I think even over $3.6 million, and it would be difficult to reduce the mill rate. We'd have to cut into a lot of our different line items. Again, it allows us with the ability to transfer funds to our capital improvement funds, like the vehicles and the unallocated capital fund. Again, we've had difficulty funding those contributions in the general fund, so we rely on generating this type of surplus in order to be able to continually invest in our city and invest in these capital improvement funds. Now let Mike speak to the debt service question.
Yeah, so I would just highlight, you know, I think it's important to recognize that, you know, the numbers that are being reported to this evening reflect the results of the end of the fiscal year for June 30 of 2020. As Sarah had mentioned, we were able to generate savings on the budgetary side on the appropriations of $3.7 million, and the revenues came in just under budget by about $85,000. So overall, a very, very successful budget year. That amount is significated as it is on a dollar value side in relation to the city's overall budget, is again, just less than 1%. The opportunity that this presents us at the end of each fiscal year, having this surplus, is the ability to allocate those monies to areas that are not necessarily fully funded during the course of the year. And again, just to, I guess, address the question as it relates to the debt service, the city's annual debt service, excluding the pension obligation bonds, is in the neighborhood of $22 million per year. So to allocate it, the positive return on allocating that towards debt service to pay it down early, you know, would, that benefit would be, you know, very small in relation to the near-term benefits that are being provided by putting the year-end surplus into the unallocated capital accounts and to other programs and services that will provide the short-term benefit for the ability to fund those activities as these costs and programs are allocated as we go forward over the next year. So we also have to deal with what's referred to as a working capital restriction. So we're not able to allow this full amount to lapse into the city's fund balance. But as is reflected in these reports of the overall surplus of $3.6 million, the transfer request is $3.1 million, so it is allowing approximately $460,000 to be added to the city's fund balance reserve. Maintaining and increasing that reserve year over year is very critical to maintaining the city's stability, financial stability, and also in our reporting to the rating agencies, these are the types of results that they're looking to see year in and year out from the city of Waterbury.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Other questions? Then Alderman Zimmerman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a question. At the city's fund account, so we can put the 400 and something thousand into that account, why? I'm just confused. Why can't we just take the whole surplus and put it in account for when we, God forbid, need it next year? Because we have a budget for next year, and there's a bunch of great programs and great things on here, and I can read what we're spending, and it's just, it's in case we need it, we're going to spend it on this, or we could use, you know, it just seems like if we need it. So why can't we put it into one bucket that might accrue interest and then later approve to take it out if we need it? How does that work?
That's a good question, and it actually harks back to the early 2000s when the city issued what at the time was referred to as its deficit financing bonds. When, back in early 2000, when the State Oversight Board came in, when Waterbury was on the verge of bankruptcy, through the backing of the state and the controls that were in place with the State Oversight Board, the city issued close to $100 million in deficit financing bonds. And they were 20-year bonds from a repayment period, so those bonds will fully mature in fiscal 2022, which, you know, really is not that far off. But when those bonds were issued, there was a bond covenant that came with the issue for those bonds that essentially, and I know it's counterintuitive, but it restricted the excess buildup of reserves in the city's fund balance during the period while those bonds were outstanding. So that is referred to as the working capital restriction. It limits the buildup of our fund balance reserve to approximately 5% of the city's overall budget. And we, you know, these numbers were calculated or determined, that are before you this evening, to facilitate our compliance with that working capital restriction. So we're able to add about $460,000 to fund balance, but because of this restriction in the cessate case, that we essentially moved that $3.1 million out of the general fund's fund balance, or not allowed, if you will, to lapse into the fund balance.
Right, thanks. I'm just trying to figure out a way to kind of give it back to the people, but still understand that we need the, we need the funds for next year, so.
I think it's, you know, it's, it may not be necessarily, you know, the type of benefit that you're looking for, but these monies are going a long way in positioning the city to self-fund its capital needs, its capital purchases, whether it be vehicles or repairs that are not funded initially within the adopted budget each year. So it's a way of providing, you know, those investments that ultimately benefit the city as a whole, you know, particularly when we're talking about the investment, again, in capital improvements benefiting the city as well as the vehicles, particularly on the police and fire side, that are not set up through separate bond authorizations. And, you know, we certainly, you know, through the adoption of the capital budget each year, you can see where, you know, the replacement program is comprehensive, particularly on the police vehicle side.
So if there's parts in here that we don't really, we don't really feel, whatever, we're not in tune to, or we don't want to vote on, I don't want to, I don't want to vote down the entire thing. So this is going to come back individually, and we're going to vote on releasing the funds? Is that how that works?
Any of the funding that is put into the unallocated accounts, the unallocated capital transfer in the amount of $800,000, and the unallocated vehicle transfer in the amount of $825,000, the board would need to approve budget transfers or approve projects in future capital plans in order for that funding to be spent.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Any further discussion or additional questions? And hearing none, the motion on the table is to approve a budget transfer within the city's general fund for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020, in the amount of $3,145,000. A yes vote will be to approve the transfer, a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, the transfer is approved. Item number seven is a budget transfer within the city's Water Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020, in the amount of $1,282,276. Alderman Brunelli? Are you there?
Motion to approve item number seven.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the transfer, a no vote would be to disapprove the transfer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the transfer is approved. With respect to item number eight, it's a budget transfer within the city's Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund with a fiscal year ending June 30, 2020, in the amount of $413,108. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve item number eight.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
The motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion, or are there any questions? Then hearing none, the motion on the table is to approve a budget transfer within the city's Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020, in the amount of $413,108. A yes vote will be to approve the transfer, a no vote to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the transfer is approved. Item number nine is a professional services agreement between the city of Waterbury and Purvis Systems Incorporated. The total contract cost will be $348,384. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve item number nine.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Anyone have any questions? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the agreement with Purvis Systems, a no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously, the agreement is approved. You want to hold it, right? You want to go forward with it? Okay. Item number 10 is a contract between the city of Waterbury and Concentra Medical Center for OSHA-regulated firefighter physicals. The term shall be for a period of one year commencing on the date of the execution by the mayor. The fee payable to Concentra shall be an amount not to exceed $60,000 and calculated in accordance with the itemized cost schedule as set for in Attachment A of the contract. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number 10.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
The motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the contract between the city and Concentra Medical Center, a no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the contract is approved. Are we still there?
Yeah.
Okay. Item number 11 is a $20,000 donation from Drew Marine to be allocated to the health and wellness of Waterbury police officers. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve item number 11.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any questions, or is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the allocation, a no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. One second. I am going to ask, I've just been informed that apparently there were some questions, not our questions, but there are questions with respect to item number nine, not the least of which is a money, the numbers were transcribed incorrectly for item number nine. So there is more information that may be forthcoming, so what I would ask at this point is, Alderman Brunelli, for a motion at this point for reconsideration of item number nine?
So moved.
Alderman Lopez?
Second.
The motion having been made and seconded, under discussion, what I would say is that the, there were some, there are apparently some questions that need to be sorted out for that item before it should go forward. And so what we would do is if we reconsider this, and then we would, I would entertain a motion, or I would just, at that point, entertain a motion to hold it until the next meeting, and then presumably, at that point, they would be forthcoming with the information, and we could move forward with it. So is there any further discussion with respect to the motion for reconsideration? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to reconsider item number nine, which will put it back onto our agenda, a no vote will be not to reconsider it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, so item number nine is now back on our agenda, and with that, we'll just hold that until the next meeting. So I don't think we need a motion for that. We'll just hold it now for the next meeting. So, does that, anybody have any questions about that process? All right. Thank you. Item number 12 is a contract between the city of Waterbury and the Imperial Company Restoration Contractor Incorporated for roof replacement at the Western Hills Clubhouse, and the contract is in the amount of $347,600. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve item number 12.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the contract, a no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the contract is approved unanimously. With respect to new business item number 13, it is a memorandum of understanding with the Greater Waterbury Health Partnership. Is there a motion, Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve item number 13.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the memorandum of understanding, a no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. With respect to standing committees? With respect to standing committees, the motion would be to approve refunds for tax overpayments in the amount of thirty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-ten dollars and thirty cents. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion or are there any questions? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the refunds for overpayments, a no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the refunds are approved. With that, I would entertain a motion, Alderman Brunelli, that we return to the regular order of business from the committee of the whole.
So moved.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. So then the following items would be on the consent calendar, and I won't go through all the details. Item one, item two are on consent to receive and place on file. Item three is on consent to approve. Item four and five are receiving placed on file. Item number six is on consent to approve. Item seven is on consent to, is on consent to approve. Item nine is being held. Item 10 is on consent to approve. Item 11 is on consent to approve. Item 12 is on consent to approve. Item 13 also on consent to approve, as is the standing committee recommendation to refund the tax overpayments in the amount of thirty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-ten dollars and thirty cents. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the consent calendar as presented, a no vote to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. With that, I think we've run out of our agenda items. So Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and we're adjourned. And I think we're back in two weeks, so everyone have a nice couple of weeks. We'll be talking to you soon. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, Waterbury.
Take care, everybody.
Good night. Adieu.